...of the Long Meadow School Committee, I would like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by LCTV. First on our agenda is, oh, actually, before we go to correspondence, I just want to welcome our new student representative, Michelle De Souza. She's joining us tonight for the first time, and she will be joining us for most of our meetings this school year. So, thank you for your time and for coming.
Thank you.
First is correspondence, there's no correspondence. Do we have any visitor comments? No. It looks like we don't have any. School committee comments. Welcome, Michael. John.
A couple of things. There'll be some ballot questions coming up in November that seem to me to have an impact on what we try to do as a school committee and our ability to deliver services to the community. The first one is on, the first one I'd like to mention is charter schools. There's a very heavily funded campaign being waged right now on behalf of a yes vote. Those are the people who support increasing the number of charter schools. They don't tell you where the money's going to come from for the increase there, but more than likely, unless the legislature does something miraculous, it's going to come out of the current budget, state funding for existing public school systems. So, I think we should have some kind of a debate, maybe a forum of some kind, where people can talk about the impact of this question on Long Meadow Public Schools and then decide whether they want to, we want to take a stand on it or whatever, but proceed with a fully informed debate. Another question that's going to be before the voting public is the legalization of marijuana. Now, technically, medical marijuana is legal, but I think a lot of people need to know that some very well-informed people are urging that legalization, full legalization, take place. And I know we also have a drug counseling program in our schools, and marijuana currently is not something that we recommend people use. However, an informed debate on that might be worthwhile, so I would like to put that forward as a potential topic. And I see that school size, and in particular, the increase over at Blueberry Hill is on the agenda, but I'm a bit surprised by that because I thought we had, with our redistricting process, pretty much solved that problem, but apparently it's still with us. So, I just mentioned those for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Stephanie.
I spoke with the State Ethics Commission, and then we did a conference call in Marty's room with the school attorney, and I am, due to conflict of interest, I won't be able to be the seal rep, for the school committee's seal rep, and also, I'm not going to be able to do the LPVEC. So, we'll need to find new people.
Anyone else? Michael?
Real quick, just to follow up on John's charter school, just a reminder to the community that the school committee joined on with a number of other school committees in a resolution opposing raising the cap, which is a known question, too. Probably in May of last year? Or this year? Yeah. Yeah, just as a follow-up that we're on record opposing. So, I agree with you.
Okay, but the gist of my measure was, or proposal was to create some kind of a public forum and make sure it's fresh in the minds of the voters.
Totally. No, I agree, just as a follow-up to you, to piggyback on you.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Russ.
So, John, are you, are you asking that those two items be placed on a future agenda, so we talk about it at the committee level?
Yes.
Is that?
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
All right, so, thank you. Exciting day today. We welcomed our kindergarten students to the district this morning, and it was, it was a real touching scene. I made it over to Center School and saw that the parents arrived with their children, and they were warmly received by the Center School staff, and I was impressed by the way they allow the students and the parents to come into the classroom. The teachers read a story to the children, and it was a nice way to send off their children into the arms of the Center School staff, and that is, that follows the arrival of most of our students on Monday, the 29th, and prior to that, the staff arrived on August 24th, and it's been, it's been a great opening, a smooth opening. The staff arrived on the 24th and spent considerable time working on common assessments and addressing the DDM requirement. The elementary teachers were fired up to dive into the elementary science series, and that was very well received, and again, our appreciation to Sue, as our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and to the Science Committee for ensuring that that's a smooth implementation and rollout, and we'll keep the committee up to date on that. I also wanted the committee to be aware that we are partnering with the town DPW to take advantage of a program sponsored by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. It's a, it's a water testing program, and specifically, DEP is using funds from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust to allow districts to test taps and water fountains for lead and copper. And so, I want to assure you that it's not, it's not done in response to anything that we've identified, it's not in response to a real or perceived problem, but we just want to get ahead of this and take advantage of this opportunity that is coming to us through DEP. And a lot of thanks to Tom Mazza for spearheading this and working with the DPW to, to take on this program. It's, it's a very ambitious testing program. It will test hundreds of taps and water fountains, all potable sources throughout the district, and that, the specific scheduling hasn't yet been scheduled, but we will keep you up to speed on that as well when the testing happens and when the results come in. The, also, some exciting news we received recently in the district, and pleased to formally announce that the Long Meadow High design was chosen by the Massachusetts School Building Authority as a design to be replicated as part of their model school program, and I think it speaks to the, the design, the quality of the design, the aesthetically pleasing nature of the design, it's, and I think it's a design that, that the MSBA recognizes as promoting outstanding teaching and learning. And so, we were fortunate to have our co-chairs from the Building Committee with us today, and if we want to invite up.
So, I'd like to welcome Bobby Barquette and Peter Greenberg to the table. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. I have a very brief statement, I apologize. I know I'm normally very short-winded, so I just want to formally say thank you for inviting us, Peter and I. On behalf of the Long Meadow High School School Building Committee, Peter Greenberg and I are proud of the designation of the new Long Meadow High School as a School Building Authority Model School here within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. One of the key elements to this designation is how education is delivered within our flexible design. We worked hard to create a building where teachers and students flourish in a 21st-century school setting.
Wow. Yeah, that's about as brief as I could.
Pretty short. So, we'll submit this to Diane.
It's, it's an exciting moment, and I think it's a tribute to the great work done by the Building Committee and the administrators that, that put this project together. So, what it means essentially is that the Long Meadow High design will be replicated across the state, and I suspect we will host communities that are interested in our design, and it'll be interesting to see how the, how it gets repurposed and replicated across the state. So, it's a really exciting time for Long Meadow, and thank you guys for coming out.
John, did you have a question?
Can we get royalties for that?
Well, unfortunately, we'd be splitting it with OMR. The architectural firm gets the bulk of the, of the kudos for the design, and of course, they submitted to the state, and the state recognized that as a complete building now, and after our audit was completed and we got our final sign-off, then we were considered to be a model school, they came out and visited, and here we are.
So, the architectural design for our high school was unique and first-
It's extremely-
For our high school.
Yes, it is, it is unique within the Commonwealth.
It's so fascinating.
The, not to go back to too much, too much history, but we did a lot of work-
Not too much history.
-with a consulting firm from the get-go, with all stakeholders involved, and from that, we have the design that we have now, which is a very flexible design, and it worked within our space, but the 180,000 square feet of new, which is what was considered to be a model space, so if another community within the Commonwealth wants to build a new high school that fits within 1,000 to 1,200 students in their enrollment, they can consider our design as their design for their new school. There's about a flexible 4% to 5% change differential, but that's about it. They, they really liked the design.
That is fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
And thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the last thing I'd like to report on is that Select Board Chair Marie Angelides had reached out to us, to Jess and I, about the possibility of bringing the Select Board up to speed on the, on the status of the, the work of the middle school working group. And so, I think at this point, we're, we're just sort of, for me anyways, it's a matter of kind of assessing where we've been and getting myself up to speed on the work of that middle school working group, and then, you know, we'll, we'll take some direction from the committee, obviously, in terms of what our next steps would be with that initiative. So, that's all I have.
Any questions?
I'm sorry. I had one other item, not in my written report to you, but we received news that Rob Killam, who is the Director, Whitson's Director, Food Service Director for the district, submitted his resignation. They have placed someone from corporate office in his place temporarily, and Tom is working with Whitson's to interview Rob's replacement, so we expect that to happen very soon. So, we haven't seen a disruption in services, but I think we have some good candidates in, in the wings that will be brought on board to replace Rob. He had a, Rob had an opportunity at, at another part of the state that he was anxious to take advantage of, so.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah. Yeah, he's done great work for us, I understand.
Yeah, he's very enthusiastic, and done a lot of good work. Okay, so, I just have a few updates. I also wanted to welcome everyone back to school. I hope everyone is having a great week, excuse me, week back. I attended convocation last, last week, and it was an honor to speak before our very dedicated staff in Long Meadow, and Marty made an excellent and hysterical presentation that we all enjoyed. The laughter and energy was really inspiring, and thank you for having me. It was, it was great, it was really a great start to the school year.
Thanks for coming out, I appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you. As you will see, we've changed our meeting day from Mondays to Tuesdays, and I just wanted to explain that my hope is that the change, change will be helpful for both school committee members and visitors. Having Tuesday meetings, I hope, will allow our members adequate time to prepare for the meeting and ask questions of administrators instead of cramming preparation into weekends and Mondays, inundating staff with questions on Mondays right after the weekend. For parents, I know Mondays can be hectic getting kids back to school, and also, if families have gone away for the weekend for vacation or for sporting events or for other reasons, I, I'm really hoping that moving the meetings off Tuesdays will be, make it more accessible for parents and visitors, and I feel the same way about the earlier start time. We're, I'm hoping that this will be easier for parents to attend, starting a little bit earlier, and also, more civilized time for committee members, so we can get home at a reasonable hour for sleep and our own mental health, especially as it begins to get cold and dark earlier, and we get into longer sessions during the budget season. So, I'm really excited about this, and I hope it will work out well for everybody, and I appreciate everyone's patience as we were trying to find a common meeting time, so thank you. I attended our first joint administrative meeting last Tuesday with the town, with Marty and with Tom, Marie Angelides, Stephen Crane, and Paul Pasterzik. My understanding is that these joint meetings were initiated a few years ago to keep the lines of communication open between the boards, and we just had very initial discussions regarding budget and scheduling for the budget season, season. So, everything's just sort of sketching out and very tentative at this point, and we'll get back to you probably within the next month or so with firmer dates. Marty or Tom, did you have anything to add about that meeting?
Sounds good.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions about the joint administrative meetings? Okay. Okay, that's all I have. So, do we, do we have any other reports?
I just have a little thing about the collaborative.
Liz, yep.
I attended the collaborative meeting last week, and just in, in response to the Finance Committee, had some questions about our OPEB liability, and so, we have a, an attorney's response about that, and also, Andy Churchill said he could also come to our meetings if you have any questions, but basically, he said that right now their assets outweigh their liabilities, so the auditor said that we have, that there's not a worry about funding the OPEB if there was a time to fund them, and, and again, Andy said he'd be happy to come and talk to us, or Paul Pasterzik, or, or Pete Landon. Any questions?
Russ.
Well, do you think that would be a good idea, have Andy come out some night to one of our meetings?
Yeah, I think that maybe it would be good, I asked, I asked them, Dan Bishop, to send us the email from their lawyer, and I haven't received it yet, so I thought maybe, maybe once they saw this legal response, that maybe that would help them answer their questions, and they saw their, our collateral sheet, but I thought maybe after that, if they still have questions, he can come.
Okay.
And I think even beyond the OPEB issue, I think it would be wise to have Andy Churchill, the Executive Director, come out to report to you on the activities of the LPVEC in general and our relationship with them, so I think it, it might, it may even be a requirement on their end that they attend member school, a member school committee meeting once a year.
Yeah, a lot of good things are going around, going on there.
So, just to explain for, because we always use terms that people probably don't understand, so OPEB is basically retiree insurance, it's other post-employment benefits, so employers aren't necessarily funding those upfront, and the, the government would actually like us to do that, so I think that's where the town was coming from with that.
Michael.
I have a report real quick.
Okay.
So, last week, Marty, Tom, Dan McLaughlin from the DPW and I met on capital planning, and so, we had a good conversation about, you know, how we want to kind of strategize what we're going to be presenting to the school committee for prioritization, as well as, you know, what sort of items, you know, are going to be making a list that we're going to give to the town eventually, and where those are going to go. So, we'll be in a position to present those, that list of recommendations to the school committee the next meeting, because I know I sent you an email on that, and I believe that Dan's going to be in attendance. Not the next meeting, the second September meeting, I apologize, I forgot what day it was, but.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, twenty-seventh, so we'll be meeting again on the 19th, I believe, to go over the final list, or develop the list, and then it'll be final.
Russ.
Is that just basically the next year or two? I mean, it's not a long-term capital plan.
It is a long-term capital list, but it'll be, it'll be inclusive of at least a five-year projection of capital items, as well as a list of recommendations for, for the FY18 budget, for inclusion in the town's budget.
But it doesn't have topics like the middle school building or senior center, or are those things listed?
Well, we're focused primarily on the school department, capital needs, so the senior center's not going to be on our list, it'll be on a DPW list, I'm sure. There will be items related to the middle schools on that list, as there have been for the last several years, including roof replacements, tile replacements, window replacements at the middle schools, elevator at Glenbrook, items like that.
But we haven't put the whole project on that list before.
Uh, no, but we are in the process of strategizing a way to better communicate the overall capital needs of the school department rather than the more immediate needs. We have traditionally sort of taken a short-term approach to capital, but we are going to be sort of focusing the larger sort of capital needs for the middle schools in their own sort of bucket, both, as well as the other buildings, in terms of items that could be considered for accelerated repair projects through the MSBA, as well as a total core project for the MSBA. So, that'll be part of the presentation. It may not be a complete list because Dan's new, and he has a month to get in, you know, get up to speed in terms of what's needed in the buildings, but it'll be a more complete list with the overall goal being to give the school committee a very good idea of what's going on in each of our buildings outside of our recommendations.
How about the town, are they giving us their list, so we can see?
We haven't asked for it, I mean, we certainly can, they've never necessarily been very forthcoming with their list, they've mostly asked for ours. I would also say that, you know, they, the Select Board does its own capital planning process, and there is a capital planning committee that meets to make recommendations to the Select Board for items to be considered at town meeting, and, you know, opening a dialogue with the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee is something we do each year. We meet with them and, you know, defend our needs, but, you know, certainly, you know, attending that meeting and hearing the overall town needs is, is probably important. The reason that we're presenting these items to the school committee in September is because the town manager's requirement is that the departments present to him, actually, four days before, we're going to be presenting to the school committee, so we'll have to vote that night, but, yeah, so the Select Board's going to do their own, their own process, you know, if the desire is to open a larger dialogue in terms of where our projects fit in with their projects, you know, that's, that certainly is something, you know, I would, I would think is a good idea.
And I think Marie is kind of, that was kind of the gist of her correspondence, was to start that conversation, because really, if you needed debt exclusions or overrides, we need to know what they might do and what we might do.
Right.
Because they need to be coordinated, hopefully, to some extent.
Yeah, and the more, the more sort of immediate presentation that we'll be making is going to be about items that we're prioritizing for FY18 with backup in term, you know, for future projects, some of which, quite honestly, is, you know, as the middle school working group begins working, are not going to be recommended simply because if we proceed with an accelerated repair project, it might, it might put us in a position where we forego being considered for a core project.
What did you say? If, if, if it's an accelerated repair project, what was the last part?
We might be in a position where we are not able to pursue a core project until towards the end of the life of that purchase by the state.
I think there's a sense that there are items that are manageable as part of that capital planning process, and then there are items that are not, and so, we just have to be prepared to communicate-
Right.
-both of those, both of those lists, and, you know, some discussion about the MSBA as two programs to support capital improvements. One is the Core Program for Building Replacement or Major Renovations, then there's the Accelerated Repair Program, which would fund projects that probably are outside of the capital planning process, but projects that the MSBA would still participate in, so.
So, those are boilers, roofs, windows, that's probably the extent of it.
Yeah, so, so, yeah.
So, just to piggyback off that, we are, we've been talking, Marie would like the school committee to present to her, you know, if, where we are with the middle schools. So, I think, like Marty mentioned, we're going to get up to speed on it and then meet as a committee again, and just take all of the information that we've got and see, you know, where we should go and perhaps discuss that as a committee-
Yeah.
-as soon as possible-
Okay.
-so that we can figure out if we're moving forward with an SOI or-
Yeah, so maybe if you and Michael can, you know, the more information that we have in terms of timeline, so that we can make sure we get it on the agenda, because, you know, it will be a, I think, comprehensive discussion about the repair issues versus, you know, pursuing the new buildings and-
Yeah. I mean, I, I'll tell you, you know, from the outset, I don't think that we, the capital planning sort of working group that, I guess I'm, I am, is planning to make any significant recommendations on a middle school capital item.
Yeah.
You know, there's obviously, there's very significant political, you know, challenges with that in terms of getting those projects through the capital planning process-
Right.
-because you've got several layers of, you know, sort of oversight and how those projects get added to a warrant, many of which are met with questions about middle schools and what we're planning to do with the middle schools. So, you know, the, you know, obviously, those would be on a list that you'll see, and with a lot of advance notice, and that can be part of, those can be included in that conversation. I don't think that we're, based on our conversation the other day, planning to really recommend moving forward with roof replacements or boilers, or the tile replacements that are on that list, or the elevator, you know, especially because, you know, that they're just not going to get funded in the short term, and any sort of significant capital investment in those buildings is going to actually be damaging to our ability as a committee to have a, you know, any sort of thoughtful consideration on a new building or a building project at all.
Michael, how does the process work, then? If you're serving as a liaison and you're having the discussions-
Yeah.
-then do you bring back the big picture and the school committee as a group, then decides?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so what we're going to do-
After the presentation.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is, what we've done historically is present the committee with the full list of capital needs that we are aware of, and I can't underscore that we aren't aware of enough, because things pop up that get added to, that get added on that list every year. For instance, the roofs were added four years ago when we kind of asked how old the roofs were.
Both of them?
Yes. So, the DPW's doing a great job maintaining the buildings, there's not really a deferred maintenance issue in the buildings, but in terms of significant capital investments, we're going to be very strategic in how we move forward. You're going to get a lot of backup beyond the list of recommendations that we're going to make on, in terms, on what those other items are that-
Okay.
-aren't a list somewhere, and we're going to be a little bit more prescriptive in, you know, trying to be a little bit less reactionary and a little bit more proactive in planning those investments, especially if Center School becomes, you know, Center School's about, what, 17 years old now since its renovation? The other two elementary schools are approaching probably 10 years, 11 years?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, and, you know, the high school still has some significant, not significant, take that word back, has some issues that need to be corrected that were not properly addressed through previous investments, as well as the building project. For instance, on the list is repainting the pool, which was done haphazardly prior to the building project, so, not, there's, you know, there's air handlers, things like that, that, you know, have an impact on our energy costs, our utility costs, things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll be a thorough, it'll be a thorough presentation.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, the, the middle school renovation slash new school issue is a big one, and it's been a big issue that's been percolating for a long time, and I do hope this year that we'll be able to make some real progress on making those schools more civilized, in whatever manner we think would be best, so I look forward to working with you on that and Michelle and the town, so. Does anyone else have any comments or questions on that issue? Okay. We're going to move on to, Dr. Shea has an enrollment update for us that he would like to, excuse me, Jess.
Did you skip, Michelle has any comments?
Oh, the student rep, that's right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, Liz, thank you.
So, school just started yesterday, so we haven't really met yet, so I hope to meet with Reggie and Noel, my other two student rep assistants, in the upcoming weeks, and I'd just like to say that we had a really good first day of school yesterday. Mr. Dunkerly was talking about how there's 52 clubs at LHS right now, and a lot of them are new, and there's still a couple more that are going to be underway.
That's great.
Yep, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I was impressed, the, you know, one of the messages that I heard the administrative team share with the students was how the seniors are essentially models for the incoming freshmen, and it's a way to perpetuate the strong culture of that school, and that's, I think that's been a really key way for, for Long Meadow High to be so active, so vibrant, and such a, have such a strong positive culture, so. Do you have homework tonight? Did anybody give you homework?
I have some.
Already? First day, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we'll move on to the enrollment update, thank you.
So, at, at the committee's request, provided you with some, sort of an enrollment snapshot, and I would just caution-
and I would just caution that this is a snapshot that was taken on August twenty-sixth, so last Friday. It's a fluid sort of moving picture. We are, you know, we register and withdraw students on a regular basis and class sizes get shifted around, but this is sort of where we stood as of August twenty-sixth. So the first page provides you with an overall enrollment picture and then we broke it down at the elementary and the middle school level. The high school, high school enrollment, that would have to wait because that, the schedule there is, is even more dynamic as students are moving in and out of classes and so it would probably be misleading to provide you with any really specific information on the high school. I can only tell you that as far as the high school, Tom Landis, the principal, had reported to me that the class size experience this year will probably mirror what, what the high school has experienced in recent years. So he's not expecting any, any major changes there. But John had asked about the elementary enrollment and the overall enrollment at the elementary schools, four twenty-four at Blueberry, four oh three at Center. The Wolf Swamp number that you see, three forty-five, doesn't include the preschools. So if you add in the preschool, it's, it's more equitable. And I think, my sense is that the redistricting, that the, the, sort of the benefits of redistricting will continue to be seen as, as student groups matriculate through and move out of the elementary schools. I would, I think you can see for yourself that we have class sizes that I think are in line with what Long Meadow has come to expect and I think they're very manageable, reasonable class sizes and they're, they're good for teaching and learning at both the elementary and the middle level. So, you know, as, as we settle into the year, if the committee's interested, we can bring you back some additional information, but this is where things stand right now and if you have any questions, we'll, we'll take a shot at answering, yeah.
On grade three, very old school, has ninety-four children.
Yeah.
And it's the highest of all. But it's also, that third grade is the largest grade going through the school.
Right.
How do you, can you explain that to us?
It could, I'm gonna maybe ask for some help from Sue and/or Tom, but it, it could be sort of a legacy thing where that, that number, it, you know, I'm guessing that that number was high when those students were in kindergarten and first grade and so they're kind of making their way through Blueberry and then I think beneath grade three, you'll see that the numbers are more even. The other thing I would note is that at the first grade at Blueberry, we added a, at the end of the summer, we added a section. And so there were four first grades at Blueberry and we were really pleased to do that. We had some late registrations and to keep that class size at a number that has, is consistent with past practice, we added that fourth grade and it wasn't a budgetary add, there was, you know, some attrition-related savings that we were able to take advantage of so that the, the funds were there.
First.
At first grade, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Fourth.
I'm sorry, first grade, yeah, first grade at Blueberry. And so, many thanks to Marie Pratt for working that out. As you can imagine, adding a section at the end of the summer is a challenge and so Marie was able to put together class rosters for us to accommodate that additional section so, and we were, we were pleased to add it. So that's a snapshot of where we are.
If you go over to the totals, uh...
Yeah.
Uh, Blueberry has four twenty-four, so that's what, twenty-one more than Center and, yeah, thirty-eight more than Wolf Swamp. That's, that's, I thought we were trying to rectify that and that was the whole purpose of that exercise in, you know, correcting, uh, redistricting, excuse me, but apparently we did not. This is before your time, son.
No, I know, I know, I know.
In your shoulders, yes.
I think there were, from what, I was an outsider at the time, but it seemed to be the two goals were reduce the number of kids because of car line and all those other things and two, also create space in Blueberry, so you have less sections in Blueberry. So it looks like the first part, there are less kids over there now, but the second part, as far as saving space, I'm not sure that really worked because we didn't, adding back that section this year and I think we did it last year. So we saved a couple of sections, you know, a couple spaces and then we filled them. So I think your points might be valid on that second part, that there are less kids, but I think we filled the space again. I mean, Marie Pratt would have to tell us that, but I don't know if there's anything we can do about that really.
The, it, overall sections you have, if I, if my quick math is correct, you have twenty-two sections at Blueberry and twenty-one at Center. So, you know, total number of sections, there, there's some equity there. The other place where there's equity is in the average class size that we see at all three buildings and I'm pleased to, to say that we, we have, you know, very consistent averages across our three elementary schools. An average of nineteen and a half at Blueberry, nineteen point two at Center and nineteen point two at Wolf Swamp. So you, you almost can't get any more equitable than that. I, I think it would be hard for us to get it any closer.
I think it's the building layout.
It could be that, right.
Because what Marie, Marie's kind of doubling up in some of those spaces and I think that was part of the problem and I think from what I've heard, they're somewhat back to that again, but...
I don't know how many sections they had previously, you know, when we added that fourth section, that was part of the conversation with Principal Marie Pratt is, you know, is there adequate space and she didn't seem to have any reservations. You know, I wish I could be more specific than that, but she seemed comfortable with that.
I mean, it doesn't seem like there's anything we can really do about it anyway. I mean, it's...
Yeah. Well, and again, I think, I think as that, you know, there's a little bubble in the middle at Blueberry and I think that as that group makes its way through, I think we'll probably see some of the evenness that John was hoping for. That's what, that would be my hope, yeah.
Do you find it interesting at Glenbrook that sixth grade, I haven't seen that in the data we've been presented before, that there's more kids in Glenbrook than Williams in sixth grade? So I thought that was interesting.
We had a hundred and twelve at sixth grade at Glenbrook and a hundred and three at sixth grade in, in Williams, yeah.
I think we've had these presentations going back like ten years. I don't think I've ever seen Glenbrook being higher than Williams.
Yeah. So we'll have to watch that just to, yeah, that came up in budget season last time about middle school as well. Yeah, I mean, you're always gonna have a few spots every year, I'm guessing, where there's, you know, a little bubble and there's a little pressure. But my take is, by and large, we're, we're in pretty good shape in terms of average section size, the middle school level even.
The, thank you for putting this together for us for this meeting. I know there were a lot of questions about it. The, the average class size, I mean, at, at the elementary schools look terrific.
Yeah.
Which is why the Wolf Swamp, fourth grade, really stuck out, the twenty-two point three three at grade four.
Yeah.
As an average?
Yeah.
For, for three classes? I, I don't know.
It was interesting to have the conversation with the elementary principals about the class sizes and one of the things that they emphasized was oftentimes it's not necessarily the number of children, but the, the need within that classroom. So you might have a classroom of twenty-two that is less needy than a classroom of eighteen. And so I think what they're good at is kind of deploying their resources to support those places where there might be, you know, slightly larger than average class size. So, you know, I, I can't give you specific information, but I'm guessing Principal Beth Nelson probably has that on her radar and is probably addressing it, you know?
That would, that would be great for us just to know in terms of how much higher that, you know, if that's an average, how much higher that number is in, in one of the classes before we get into the budget season?
Sure.
That'd be great, thanks, Marty.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Stephanie?
I think your point just falling up on the averages, it was, I had that same question because it is an average, so it really can go, um, in either direction as far, so I think it would be helpful to find out if there, how high it does go.
I think they keep them balanced almost, you know, so my guess is that, and, and I don't know, Sue can help me out with this, that that fourth grade, would they go, there's probably a classroom of twenty-two, another one of twenty-two and one of twenty-three? Are they, are they that, probably that precise about it, right? Yeah, but I could, we can check on that. You know, we wouldn't wanna see unevenness, we wouldn't want, want it twenty-five and another at twenty, you know?
I didn't know, oh.
Yeah.
If they were adjusting, say they had a parrot or something like that and wanted to adjust the class size based on the number of bodies in the room too, I didn't know if there's that.
That's the unknown component for us at our level often, is not having that as part of the picture, which makes it a little more challenging. We don't know how many paras and how many, how many, you know, support staff are in those classrooms that are able to help other students. So that's always a question that I have as well, yeah.
And I think not only at Wolf Swamp too, but the middle school, some, you know, you can go into some of these classrooms and the class size is small, but, but the bodies in the room are more and then the, the room size is small. So sometimes it is helpful, I feel like, to get a sense of how many people are in the, the room, both in terms of bodies but also students.
By way of example, if, if that first grade at Blueberry had stayed at three sections, Marie was, she had some recommendations for us on how she could address that with, you know, an academic tutor or some instructional aides, so, you know, they're, again, they're good at kind of targeting the support personnel to, help deal with any, any pops in, in class size, so.
Does anyone know if we've had a working document that is already in existence, like the, the setup where each school, we have the layout for each class and how many students are actually in each class? Did the school committee have that last year during budget season?
K five, we would, would break down each section and how many students. That's usually our October one enrollment report.
Right.
The K five.
So on October one, though?
We, we run a report.
Numbers.
And we'll give you how many students are in each class. But we, that's the, that's, October one is the, enrollment should be fairly stable by then. They are not stable right now.
Okay.
They're up in, I've still got kids enrolling.
Yeah.
Are we gonna get that past K five? Can we get that for middle and high as to how many kids are in?
It'll go, it'll go K five and then sixth grade. And then when you get up into seventh and eighth grade, they end up, it's, it's subject area, so I don't do it for that. I know they did it last year for budget season, it was a lot of, it was a lot to ask of the principals, but, I mean...
That was what I was concerned about. Exactly that.
And it, and it might be so much data that it becomes useless really because it's, I mean, you're, you're, you're listing all the sections at the middle schools and, you know, when you break it down by subject, it's, you know, every teacher times five classes times two middle schools.
In some ways, though, I feel like that information is, is necessary because I would like to know how many kids are in each section. So you have different sections of math, science, and especially when you're talking about eighth graders and going into high school, I think it's important to have a read of how many kids are in algebra, how many kids are in pre-algebra, maybe not necessarily, I mean, we do have a read here, but I don't know if they're, I, I don't know. Is it really that hard? They're all in power schools, is it really hard to pull?
It may not be hard to print that master roster of sections and we can get that for you, you know, if, if you want that to be part of the October one report.
Oh, and we talk about staffing and, I, I don't know. I was, I just think that that would be, if it's not a, I, if it's not a big deal to pull it, I think it, Michael.
The only, the only problem with, you know, trying to figure out how many kids in eighth grade, you know, are in a certain level of math is that they go into three different levels of math in high school, so that's not really helpful because the teacher makes that recommendation at the end of the year on where, you know, on which, and then those kids can then say, well, I don't, or the parents can say, I don't want my kid in pre-al or algebra one, well, I'm in geometry. And so, you know, we know how many kids there are, we know they're all gonna be taking math and, but you don't know until at least, what, April, when class, when that book goes out?
Yeah, class items.
I mean, even what, what you're looking at and then it changes over the summer. So I don't, I mean, obviously the data's always helpful to have, but I don't know what purpose it serves.
I'll, I'll elaborate a little bit. What I, what I, 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 I just think more information can be helpful and in this way, when you do have that choice in high school, I would like to see some continuity in how we track, how we look at the kids and what sections they're in, in middle school and where they end up in high school and what's happening to the kids. Are they taking algebra but taking it again in high school or? I, I, I just feel like there's a lot of information there and maybe we use it and maybe we don't, but if it's easy enough to pull, um, you know, and then we talk about staffing and I just think that it would be nice to know where these kids are along the way and how many are in the class and where do they go the next year and...
We can give you some different layers, you know, so they give you a high level enrollment reports and then kind of drill it down a little further and, you know, we'll see what we can pull together for you.
No, if I could, I, I support what Stephanie's saying here, as a former teacher at the high school. One of the things that used to happen, I don't know if it still does, is guidance counselors were counted as teachers when we were figuring out pupil teacher ratios. And that's a bit unfair.
Yeah.
It should really be, how many are in Smith's class, how many are in Jones's class? How many classes does Smith teach, how many does Joan? So that, yeah, we could then do some analysis of what's happening. Are we, are kids that we're accelerating in the middle school following through on that or, or what? But, I mean, it would give more information improves any analysis of a situation, such as more data.
Yeah, yeah, if you look at the...
I think you know what I'm talking about.
No, I do, I think, absolutely, when you look at, when you look at, say, DESE staffing reports, if you went online and on the Department of Ed, you'd see pupil, student teacher ratios that reflect all personnel, counseling staff, school psychologists, social workers, that kind of thing, and so that can be, that can be misleading. Yeah.
Russ?
I, I think just this information today, the one basic thing I'd really wanna know is what's Glenbuck, Glenbrook versus Williams gonna look like for the next year, 'cause you only have three grades. So if sixth grade is higher in Glenbrook right now, in the incoming sixth grade, if that was higher, we staff Williams higher than Glenbrook. So you'd have, you know, as a committee, we'd have to look at what does that mean? But it's probably just a blip, probably wouldn't happen, but I think that at a minimum, we should look at that and see.
Jess?
Oh, I'm sorry, Liz. We were given a document last year when we were doing enrollment about projections of the middle schools, so maybe you could look at that.
Yeah, but I need to know next year, not the past.
Right, projections for next year. It goes up to two thousand twenty, twenty-one.
I don't think it was correct though, because Glenbrook ended up being higher than Williams and I don't think that was the projection we got, so. The projections are good, but they're not exact science, obviously.
Right, so it's good that we have a working document to start off and we can, that we can use to cross-check data at least. Yes?
Yeah.
And then if there are specific questions about specific grades or sections, you can always ask those. Okay. Was there anything else on the enrollment?
Uh, that's it, that's all I have, yeah.
I'm gonna move the agenda around just a tad and hop to school committee goals. We, we tentatively have a meeting, well, we tentatively had a meeting scheduled for September twentieth. However, it looks like we're going to need to schedule it for October. So if Diane would be kind enough, maybe tomorrow to send out a calendar so we can look at some dates for October. The plan for this year, I know every year has been different with the goal-setting meeting and for those of you who aren't familiar, who are watching at home, the school committee will meet off-campus, off-camera, sort of throwing ideas around and putting together a document for goals for the upcoming year that will also then coincide with the superintendent's goals. And the plan for this year is for school, school committee members to submit your ideas for goals for this year to Diane and she will create a document that we will have in front of us during that meeting. I think that it will help to expedite the information sharing that way and then we can really look at it as a group, have a back and forth discussion about it and then generate a final document that would then be approved by the whole committee. Are there any questions about that process or suggestions or ideas?
So is September twentieth definitely canceled?
Yes.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I have two other meetings that day already and I was stretching it to... to try to make an additional meeting and I just can't do it, so.
That's fine.
That was the only day I think that we were even, it was even possible for us to do. So I think we're gonna need to start again, um, for October, yeah.
Okay.
Michelle, did you have something?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to confirm it was canceled.
Yeah. Thank you. And let's do an approval of the overnight field trip, please. Okay. Yeah, that would be great. Does anyone have any questions for Marty about, for, Marty, do you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, I, I can, you know, this is, um, some of these, these trips I believe that are in front of you are, are annual trips and so, um, one involves students from Williams and Glenn Brook traveling to Quebec on Thursday, May twenty-fifth through May twenty-seventh. And that's a field trip that provides some cultural enrichment for the students and, um, uh, it's tied into social studies and foreign language in some cases, so.
Okay.
I think that's an annual trip, if that's, is that correct Diane?
Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I ask.
Stephanie.
Is the cost of that, the six hundred and twenty, it was very faint, was it six hundred and twenty-five or six thirty-five or something like that?
It was in that range, was it, yeah.
It looks like six twenty-five to six.
Is that per student?
Per student.
Okay.
Yeah.
I also wanted to ask a question, was there anything, and this is not related to letting it go through, but as far as field trips go and being new, is there anything in place for camp boarded? Or, um, is there a way for them to raise money or how is that addressed with field trips?
Yeah, maybe Tom can shed more light on this, the principals do have some discretionary funds that allow them to provide relief to students who might have a hard time making ends meet on that trip, is that?
Yeah, I mean, they have various activities through their student activity accounts, whether it be, uh, magazine drive or those coupon books that they sell to help raise funds and then they can use that to offset the cost of the trip and some of it's set aside for those students who might need assistance and can't afford to go or can't afford all of it, so they can support them out of those funds.
Okay. Thanks.
So we would need a motion to approve that trip to Quebec, Canada on Thursday, May twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh.
To move on, the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approved the overnight field trip request for students from Williams and Glenn Brook Middle Schools to travel to Quebec, Canada on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, through Saturday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen.
There's a date issue on that. Year, it's two thousand twelve.
Well, let's have a second and then we can, we. Let's have a second and then we can discuss the amendment. So, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. And we have a correction?
I will amend that motion to read May twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Okay. So the motion is amended, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I hope they have fun.
Sure they will, thank you.
Sure they will. Okay, so let's move on to see.
The consent agenda is another field trip, actually.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, there was one more, yeah.
So you wanna discuss, you have to take it off the consent agenda.
I'll just make a motion.
Okay.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the August thirtieth, two thousand sixteen school committee meeting as presented.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Now we can move on to, let's hop back to, sorry for jumping around, to see the homework expectations.
All right. So I had been approached by one or two school committee members at least and even members of the administrative team had asked me about the implementation of the homework expectations. And I know that this was a, a big undertaking for the district this past year and I think there was some, uh, question about where are we with it and, and how did it go last year? And, um, what's the status of the implementation? And so, um, if that is something that the committee would like some additional information on, uh, I think I've heard enough questions on it to cause me to want to go back to our administrative team, teachers, uh, parents, perhaps using school councils as a vehicle for the discussion to sort of gather some information on the, on the implementation of the homework expectations. And, um, then if, if, if it makes sense, I could come back to the committee in a few weeks with maybe, uh, an idea of, if, if the expectations need some revision, change, adaptation, I could come back to the committee with, uh, you know, a description of the process that I would wanna follow to, um, create those changes. And so, if that makes sense, um, I probably need, you know, a couple of weeks at least to go back to the administrative team and the, and the teachers. I'd have to see if school councils are in place because I think that would be a good, those would be good groups to gather some information from as well. And then, you know, see where we stand. I think we wanna make sure that we have homework expectations that are reflective of the latest research, best teaching practice and are really sensitive to the developmental needs of kids. And, um, I think if we can achieve that, then, you know, that's something I would be interested in. It is, from my perspective, it's a tough matter to, to legislate and create policy on. I mean, I'm thinking back when I was a classroom teacher and I, if you said to me, what's your homework policy? I, I might have a hard time explaining what my homework policy was for all twenty-five children in my classroom because it, it, the answer would be, well, it depends, it depends on the unique needs and interests of every kid in the room. And so, you know, you might have some standard homework, but you're always adapting and adopting the homework to, to the unique needs of children. So, um, if that's something that this committee and other stakeholders, administrators, teachers feel like we should take a, uh, another look at, I'm, I'm game for that, I'm, I'm up for that discussion, you know, to see if any changes are necessary, yeah.
John.
I'm wondering why we're revisiting this when we just did this back in May of two thousand fifteen.
I think.
I'm not aware of any major change since that, did something happen, uh, that stirred up the populace and anger and revolution?
I think my understand, there are a couple of items, I, my understanding is that there are a lot of concerns among parents and, um, staff about the homework guidelines. And so enough, as Marty sort of alluded to, um, justify bringing up as a discussion. And also, I know that there was going to be a survey distributed at the end of last year that didn't occur. So that might be a logical next step, uh, for, for the district. Did you wanna add and then Stephanie had?
Yeah, I, I don't know that, I don't know that there is, you know, any, any significant reaction in favor of it or against it, I, I have been asked about it. You know, where, where are we on this, that's kind of been the question, where are we on this, the implementation of the homework expectations? I've heard that from members of the administrative team, I've heard that from a couple of school committee members and, you know, randomly from some, some teachers, you know, so, um, it, it might be, if it needs further clarity, if it needs some revision, it, it might be worth bringing back. I'd hate to have a document out there that we're, you know, still wondering about. That's kinda where I'm coming from on it, so.
Stephanie.
Um, and from what I listened to at the end of last year, there was that discussion about a survey. I think it was left open, there wasn't any closure on what to do about the homework policy. And my, I, I think it's a great step. I would love to hear from the individual schools and administrators, the school councils on what the, um, what their thinking is and, and thoughts on homework within the individual schools and then hear from you, um, on that. What was posted on the district is interesting and I think it's a topic that goes, um, not just in our district, but statewide and nationwide, on where these homework, um, where the thinking came from and where the research came from. And one of the big gurus on it is Cooper, um, from Duke and he in two thousand and six did an analysis of past research from nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand and three. All of the studies were really admittedly, um, poorly designed, but this is where this homework policy thinking came from. But yet there, and even in those studies, there was nothing to back up academic achievement, a correlation between academic achievement and homework in the younger grades. So, um, there's a lot of thinking about it. I think the first step is to hear from the teachers, hear from the administrators as to their thinking about homework. Is it working, what is it like in the younger grades? So that ten-minute kind of rule that came out and is, is implemented somewhat on blind faith based on the research, um, is interesting because ten minutes, what do you get out of ten minutes, um, in homework?
That was the NEA and the.
Yeah, so NEA has on their.
There's one other.
Website, this ten-minute rule from him, they cite two articles and that's it. One research, actual article is Cooper. There's, there's just a lot of, there's a lot out there on it. But I think the first step is to hear from, hear from our administrators, hear from the teachers, hear from the parents about, um, their take on homework, is it effective? How is it impacting them? Do the teachers feel like it's helpful? And especially when you're talking about ten minutes, ten minutes which can be really upsetting to a family and what is it achieving? You know, I really wanna see, is it achieving what, um, the teachers are hoping? And, and I think, um, I think that's a great first step.
I saw Michelle first and then the other.
No, I was just gonna say that I support, um, gathering some feedback from everybody, all the stakeholders, as, as many people as you can to see how it went. You know, it was, it was a one-year process and how did it go? What went well? What did teachers and staff see didn't work well and how did, how did it affect everybody? So I think, I think it's a great time to assess how it went.
Yeah, I was gonna basically say the same thing. I think the school council idea was good and I'd like to see what teachers think and parents, but, but there are a couple more recent studies where they did find at the elementary level that it wasn't all that productive.
Yeah.
So I think that's one thing that has changed. But, I'm not sure the committee is really, it is more appropriate to be administration, teacher and school council driven. So I think it'd be great for it to come back to us, but I, I don't, I'm not really, just to state my personal opinion, I'm not crazy about the guideline idea in the first place because I think you need to have a general idea of, is our expectation at the elementary level, for example, a lot of homework or not a lot of homework? I can see that, but when we get into specific numbers of minutes and all of that.
Right.
One, I don't think a lot of people necessarily follow it and two, I'm not sure they have to because it is different in different classrooms.
Right.
So I would like to hear what the outcome is, but I'm not sure, at least for me, I'm not looking to, um, dictate guidelines necessarily. I'm not even really a fan of the guidelines in the first place.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, I would, I would say I agree with that. I, I think maybe that's the feedback that you're gonna get from the teachers and if that's the case, then I think, you know, we as a district can maybe just develop a philosophy about homework and, and, you know, where we wanna be, but give them the academic freedom to, because like you said, you had different policy for your twenty-five students within one section, so I think, um.
Yeah, I mean, again, as a teacher, you know, you face that question, how much, how much homework do you give? I don't know, I mean, it depends, right? It depends on every child in that classroom, you know? So, it, it's, it was always a very hard question to, to answer in, you know, some specific number of minutes, yeah.
Liz, sorry, um, so do you want a question? Do we still want to send out that survey that we had or do you wanna wait until you get your feedback?
Uh, you know, I, I've thought about that, I, 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 though that had been a commitment and if that was the commitment, I'll follow through with that. My, my concern would be having the first survey I send out be about homework.
Right.
I just don't, I mean, there's a few other, um, more high-level things that I'm interested in getting feedback from on, from the community on via survey.
Okay, your call.
And so that's, that's my reluctance there, I think. So I, I.
That's fine.
I don't know if the committee's okay with that, but.
And just one other thing, um, I think even beyond the minutes of doing homework, for example, you guys think a lot about elementary level, but what about high school level? What about having group projects over vacation? We, I think we need to straighten out things like that.
Yep. I think that's exactly why we need, this is a starting point for generating a discussion among all the stakeholders in the community. And really, I hope this year will be an information gathering year about homework. It's a really big topic, it's a really timely topic, there's a lot of new research, there are a lot of new studies. There are, uh, s- school committees that do have specific policy, homework policies, and some districts that have more general philosophies that were born out of, um, a, a really excellent process of, um, going out into the community and, and creating groups of stakeholders, students, teachers, parents, and having those important discussions. So, that is, that is, you know, hopefully what, one of the things we can accomplish this year. And back to what Stephanie was saying in terms of, you know, really looking at the correlation between academic achievement and homework and really thinking about how we're using our time because there is so much stress and so much pressure in our schools today. So we really need to look at the value of, of our children's time, of our family's time, and in terms of learning inside the classroom, learning outside the classroom. It's so, what else did I wanna say? I think that was all. But I think it's, you know, it's an interesting topic and I look forward to continuing our discussion about it. Stephanie.
And just to piggyback on that, I don't think it needs to be another agenda item, but when we talk about time spent and, um, one of the things when you're speaking with these stakeholders and administrators and parents is I'd like to get a read on recess. If, when you're talking to them, um, because I know at, at Center School, one of the recesses was dropped in, um, favor of extending the lunch one. It went for almost an entire year, I'd like to know how that went. I'd like to know if, um, you know, there was an increase in, um, behavioral issues, if there was an increase in kids having difficulty sitting. It's a longer recess towards the lunch, but it also is a longer time that those kids have to sit. So when we talk about, um, you know, my, my child's in one of the classrooms where they have the cycle desks and the need for movement and all the research that, um, is around that, you know, I, teachers are aware, administrators are aware, so I would like to hear from them how that went and, um, and start that discussion about, about recess as well and hearing, um, input from those stakeholders.
Michelle.
I, I would say I, I support that too. I don't know if you'll have to break them into two different things, but since it came up, I would love, just to gather some information from the staff about how they feel about recess and having it, you know, having more of it and how.
Yeah, I think the quick answer would be, should there be more recess? Yes. Should there be more time for math? Yes. Should there be more time for science? Yes. Should there be more time for music? Yes. I think it's, it's, it's a challenge balancing, particularly at the elementary level, balancing all the competing needs and, uh, and so, you know, my question would be, you know, are we integrating movement into the academic areas beyond, you know, the cycle desks and things? But are we integrating movement into, into music and, and, and any subject really? There's opportunities to do that, so. It's, it's the challenge, you know, even when I talk to the teachers about the science curriculum. So how are we going to quote, find the time for this? A lot of, but, a lot of it is about integration. Can we integrate, um, you know, the reading requirements that go with the science curriculum? Can those support some of our ELA goals? You know, that, those are the types of discussions that happen every single day, I think, at the elementary level especially, so. But, um, if that is, you know, something that the committee's interested in, we can, we can.
I would support that as well. Russ.
Yeah, I think those are really the two hot-button issues. I mean, and it's studies recently kind of show that recess and homework are two things that have, the thinking on both of those has kind of changed over time.
Yeah.
I used to be really, the recess thing I used to think was, um, in order to meet all your goals, it seemed like getting rid of recess was a good idea. But the more I've dealt with behavioral issues and negotiating teacher contracts, I've realized that some of those studies might be right because what happens is we end up staffing higher and a lot of the, my clients end up staffing higher because they need to control right after recess and all the issues that happen, well, well, basically before recess. And when we took it away in certain places, it actually did create, we ended up spending. some of my clients ended up spending more money because they had to get more people in place because behavioral issues went up.
Exactly.
So I've had a few superintendents actually look at doing the reverse because we figured we could, one, it would be better for kids, and two, you potentially could save some money.
This is really progressive thinking because that dovetails into where we have these new social emotional curriculums. You know, we're adding curriculums. I wonder if we can step back and look at how we can do things differently to support social, emotional health and wellbeing of our students proactively, you know, in addition. So the, I think a lot of successful people will say, and this has become much more mainstream, that productivity is actually increased by taking breaks during the day. So even though we talk about time on learning, time on learning, time on learning, that's not necessarily gonna generate more knowledge, understanding, and success for our students. And I think to take a closer look at that is important.
Yeah, I agree. And the other thing I wanted to add is I agree with you on the survey. I think it makes sense to hold off on that or maybe not do it at all potentially. But I'd rather know right now what administrators think of it, what you think of it as the new superintendent, you know, what the teachers think and what school councils think. That would probably be more useful for us.
Right.
And then we can move forward from there? Yeah, I agree with Russ.
Okay. Yeah, John.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Oh, am I skipping? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Let me skip something.
John, you wishful thinking. We have...
Seven B. You got seven B, seven E. Seven B and seven E.
Okay.
Sure. So seven B is, relates to school improvement planning. And so I, I wish I had a projector for you tonight, but with our different venue here, the handout will have to do. So in your packet, there is a sort of, a visual representation of how I hope to see the improvement planning process roll out in the district. And so we see, you know, very simply how district improvement planning can inform school improvement planning, which can inform educator plans. And so that, that district improvement plan, you'll notice that, you know, that's something I've, I've mentioned that I'm in the process of trying to pull together. And to go back to the survey question, that's really where, where I'd like to put my, the basket that I'd like to put my survey eggs in right now is, is getting a survey out to the community that will inform the development of a, kind of a broad district improvement plan. And so I've been working on that. And then school improvement plans, on the back, you'll see a sort of proposed cycle. I'm holding it upside down for the camera here. And right now, the schools are pulling together their school councils. School councils by statute are, are the groups that are in charge of putting together school improvement plans. So those school councils are, are getting pulled together. They'll start to look at last year's plan and they'll begin to put together a plan to guide the work of the school this year. The timing of it makes sense because MCAS results are in the school's hands now. And so we think that we can put together solid school improvement plans for your review sometime at the beginning of December. And then you have, the cycle then goes from December to November of the next year. So that's your school improvement planning cycle. And so again, we hope that we can bring all these things in alignment. We can bring a, a district plan that, that shapes the individual school improvement plans. And so if that, if that, that's kind of the cycle that I talked to the administrative team about at a retreat this summer, and they seemed like they're on board with that. We've got a good template in place to develop action steps around school improvement planning goals. And so, and, and many of the goals that they had last year will, you know, may carry over to this year. It's not like they reinvent the wheel every single year. You know, there, there's a sort of a continuum that's in place. So just throwing that out there, maybe it's more informational than anything, but happy to answer any questions if you haven't.
Do we have, so, so I know, I think Center School has a school council, I believe, as new as of last year. Is Wolf Swamp in, they don't have one? Are they on their way to getting one?
I can't speak to last year. The, the principals understand that they need to pull together a school improvement council right now for the sixteen, seventeen school year. So I, I don't know if, if there were school councils in place last year. But it's, it's required by statute and I think it's a good vehicle to talk about school improvement planning. So I don't know about last year.
So if there's not one place or in centers, I think relatively new, one thing that struck me is to set those goals and action plan and have it in place by December is a really short period of time. You know, if they're looking at goals, they've gotta collect data, they've gotta analyze, they've gotta figure out what their goals are and then come up with the action plan and then they...
Right. It seems short if you think about it just in one year, as a one-year thing. But if, if every school had an improvement plan last year. And so presumably, some of those goals may get carried over or they may get amended. So it's a, you know, it's an evolutionary thing. It's not like they're, it's not like they're developing the plans from scratch. There's, there's a baseline to work off of.
So even if they didn't have a school council, we're gonna go off the, one the principal had put for us?
Yes. And, and that would have been, correct me if I'm wrong, Diane, that this individual school improvement plans were they brought before the school committee or at some point?
They, they used to talk about them, I believe.
Last year.
Yeah, we reported on them.
Yeah.
They don't approve, approve them, but they got the report.
Russ?
Yeah, I'm very glad you're doing this, actually. So I think it's good that we're gonna have an overall plan for the whole district, which I, I think is gonna be a big improvement, so.
Right.
And I think the timeline works good, too. I would actually like to see the school improvement plans. I know we don't approve them, but it'd be good to see the actual full document.
Yes, I, that would be my intention to give you, submit the whole, did that happen?
They did, you did.
No, we only passed it anymore. We used to, yeah.
But we can't, we can't...
We have the right to ask to review them, but not approve.
Oh, okay. My understanding was we can, we can approve them. I don't know, this law is pretty dense, it's not really dense, but there's a lot.
The district improvement plan, we approve.
Yeah.
Regardless, my intention would be to bring those plans before you to get your support and, you know, whatever manner I can, whatever manner is required. But I think it's, it's, again, if you think of it as a cyclical process, I think it, it makes more sense. And, you know, part of the problem is, not that MCAS results are the end-all and the be-all, but they do inform the development of school improvement plans. And so we don't really get those results until the summertime. You really don't start to digest them and dissect them until September and October. So it's, it's, it's a realistic timeframe, I think.
And I was gonna say, Center School had, their council had put out a survey, which was nice. And I think it'll inform their school improvement plan in a different way than just relying on, on test scores. So I don't know if they're sharing it with the other schools or if the other schools are gonna think about picking that up too, but it's a nice way to get a read on parents and really have a more robust, I think, school improvement plan that's not just based on the, on the MCAS.
MCAS scores, right, yeah. Agreed.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good topic to, you know, think about revitalizing, so to speak, the school councils a bit and taking another look at how we're doing things in Long Meadow and in terms of consistencies and in terms of the law. I think it's interesting that there is a lot of flexibility for school committees to grant authority to school councils. And I think it's something that maybe has been underutilized. And I'd, I'd really like to utilize that as a tool for informing the committee more about what's going on around the district, so. Anything else on that topic? So we'll move on to, okay, we have the Act Relative to Substance Use Treatment Education Prevention.
So there's a one-pager in your packet which represents the best summary I could find of the educational implications of this act that Jess mentioned. It's more commonly known as the opioid bill. And so there are some expectations around reporting on our activities on prevention education. And then there's some expectations around verbal screening, which is a tool to identify students who might have an inclination to be involved with substances. And so I certainly don't have all the answers for you tonight, but it's probably time to pull together the policy subcommittee to make sure that we are responding to this new requirement. And right now, I'm sort of doing an inventory of, of what we're involved with in terms of prevention education. We had a brief discussion with the administrative team about that. But the, the expectation is that there's a sort of a comprehensive prevention education program in place and that, and that parents are very aware of what you're doing around prevention, so.
Did you want to say anything?
Oh, about the Esper. Just that it's a very helpful tool. Students have the right to opt out themselves from the screening along with parents. That information gets transported, transmitted back to DPH and it provides the state with some very good data on substance abuse treatment and where interventions can be aimed, where funding should be directed. So, you know, it's, it was a little controversial. I know in some other communities, just by nature, the fact that it's another mandate and that there's a screening. But, you know, given, I think, where we are as a Commonwealth in terms of combating an opiate addiction crisis, you know, having some awareness of what our students are doing or at least what their friends are doing maybe, or what's making them, you know, what they're aware of is, is very helpful. You know, I think in, in developing a response to that crisis. You know, we've kicked it around a lot in this community, you know, at least on this committee. And, you know, we've all kind of acknowledged there's an issue. But this is a crisis that's impacting every single community in the Commonwealth. You know, Long Meadow use, is part of a consortium that purchases Narcan at a reduced rate. We see opiate overdoses in our senior community. We haven't seen, hopefully, as much in our school communities. But, you know, this isn't just kids using heroin. It's kids going to their parents', like, you know, medicine cabinets and taking OxyContin or taking Percocet. So that's a really big issue. I know that Shelley Warren at the high school is just doing a fantastic job of working with the other substance abuse coordinators in other communities, and Wilberham being one of them. And I know that Hannah Wilberham has had a very aggressive program under their former superintendent's leadership. So, you know, I'm happy to get the, the policy subcommittee together to implement the Esper and give the administration tools they need to get this thing done.
You could connect with Hamden Wilberham on that? That would be great.
They still talk to me.
Stephanie?
I have a couple logistical things, but first, I don't think section ninety-seven needs to be implemented, the verbal screening.
Yes.
Correct. We just have to do ninety-six.
Yep.
And when, you know, I brought up this concern before, and I know that Marty is, is looking into it because as our policy is written, I really want to know whether we're following it or not. So that'll be really important in terms of the education and programming that we have in place. So I'm really interested and eager to meet so that we can meet as a policy subcommittee and then we can hear information and whether we need to, you know, what needs to be done to make sure that we're following our own policy.
Policy sub, is there, is there currently a chair or, or did we have a chair?
We haven't met yet, no. I think, yeah, I think we'll meet and decide on that. But I would like to meet as soon as possible.
Yeah. Who's the third member? I know you and Michael.
And Jess.
Jess, okay.
Do we know, has MAS C put out any sample policies on how to implement some departments?
No, I, I don't think they have. Desi was supposed to put out some information to guide districts. There were, we were expecting some guidance on this and it hasn't arrived yet. And so I think there's a lot of districts that are waiting on that. Nevertheless, I agree with Stephanie. I think it, it would be wise to pull together the policy subcommittee just to start to understand what do we currently have in place. You know, frankly, you probably could put together a policy that checks the box and helps us satisfy the requirements of the law. But what are we doing in earnest to, around prevention education? I think that, you know, we want to do something that doesn't, that sort of goes beyond just meeting the, the requirements of the legislation. The verbal screening, and Stephanie said that, that really, that requirement doesn't kick in until seventeen, eighteen. And it's the key, three phrases, three words in that part of the law. Subject to appropriation. So I think I'll be interested to see if there are funds that support that part of the law.
Well, you know, we're flush with cash on the state and the town.
That's right. That's right.
True. And if I could just add, in terms of our policy, it's, you know, and, and the sample policies are on MAS C's website and I've looked at the other towns. And I think, you know, in, in terms of checking off the box, I think we are pretty, I mean, it looks good and we'll meet and discuss that. But it is a matter of everyone has this policy. I'm very curious as to who's following it and if they're, or if they're waiting on, and if we can hear from, we're waiting on them to give guidance as to how to implement this, especially at the younger grades. You know, and how long are we gonna wait for them? Or are we gonna try to do something ourselves?
Yeah. That's fair.
I think we got, in anticipation, let me know, reach out to Desi and see.
Go ahead.
That's great, thank you. John, I think it's your big moment.
Lawrence, okay. I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number two-two-zero-zero of the school lunch fund, dated two September twenty sixteen and the amount of two hundred and one dollars and ninety cents.
All those, all those in favor? Opposed?
And I will, the school committee approve the warrant batch number three-two-six-five of the general fund for fiscal year twenty seventeen, dated two September twenty sixteen and the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifteen cents.
All those in favor? Opposed?
This requires four signatures.
And the minutes?
And that's it for...
You're, that's it for you, John?
I have a question about the minutes. Do we need a motion first?
Um, no, you can ask a question, that's fine.
Michelle's not listed in any, you're neither here nor there.
On this particular thing?
But I...
On this particular thing?
Yeah, was that the, you know where you were the tenth of August?
That was just the warrant meeting, yeah. She could, so she couldn't participate remotely.
She was missing. She didn't participate. So I'll have to write that in.
So she was absent?
Yes.
It was listed that way, right?
No, I forgot to put your name.
Gotcha. That's okay.
But if someone participates by phone, they're, they're present, right?
It says, but I wasn't on that one. But it usually says my name with remote participation.
Yeah.
Or if I had been, but this time.
So I took your name off that and forgot to put it below.
Gotcha. All right, a motion for the...
We shift the minutes of August tenth, twenty sixteen.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? We need one more motion. You're abstaining, oh, abstaining, I'm sorry. Two, two abstentions. We need a motion to adjourn, please.
Uh, what about the payroll sheet signing?
Right. But we need to know about...
Payroll sheet.
To read the signed agenda.
Well, the end of warrants, there's a question about having to sign, someone sign for payroll. I think we voted in August to make, Michael?
I just did it the other day.
No, I'm not, pick it up now. But I mean, we have to appoint someone for the answer or the next? Or do we wanna just leave it as someone from the...
Finance, finance subcommittee, yeah.
When, can I just ask, when you go in and do the warrants, is there, the payrolls in those warrants, correct? When, can I just ask, when you go in and do the warrants, is there the payrolls in those warrants, correct? Or is it just the invoices? Okay. So when someone look, uh, looks through the warrants?
Well, I'm probably gonna have to say my interpretation of the law would be that school committee has to dedicate a specific member to sign the payroll. Whereas the review of the warrants can be done by anybody.
Well, so my, my question is, can the person who reviews the warrants concurrently review the payroll warrant during the exact, during the same time they sit down to review the warrants?
They can.
Well, not necessarily, 'cause we get paid every two weeks.
Yeah.
Well, not, not under my plan.
And, and warrant.
So long as the schedule lines up.
As long as it skips, but it doesn't always.
So would it make sense to say that when it matches up, that we just get, include that warrant with the full list of warrants? And when it doesn't, we assign someone to do it? Or should we just do it meeting by meeting? I don't care.
Whatever works for you.
Thank you.
For the committee.
Is that a challenge for you, I mean, given your work in Boston?
What?
To, to, to be available, because I think I'm more flexible in terms of time.
Oh, I wasn't volunteering.
I'm happy to sign.
But I, you know, I, I stopped in Monday morning, uh, at like nine o'clock. It took me five minutes, um, just to make sure the numbers don't match.
Okay, all right. I was just gonna say if you had a problem.
No, I appreciate that, though. Thank you. I don't mind doing it.
Do you wanna do it, John?
Yeah, if you're willing to do it, yeah.
It's pretty easy.
It doesn't have a pointless.
So do you wanna authorize John as your person?
So moved.
Do we need to vote to authorize John?
Yeah.
I would be, yeah, I think that would be a good, a good move to.
So, Michael, would you mind making a motion?
No longer employed.
I, I move to appoint John Fitzgerald the payroll czar.
I like that.
Second.
To authorize John to sign the payroll warrant.
Second.
All those.
All those in favor? Opposed? Now we can have.
Thank you.
Do we not need to read this part where it says I approve the field trip in the consent agenda?
Or we could take it out of the consent agenda.
All right, just wanna make sure. Thank you, Liz. Michelle?
Move to adjourn.
We need six. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you.